There are any non-voters in the hall, please sit in the section to my left. The tellers would please come forward. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would please hold up your cards so that the tellers may take account.
I was getting really irritated at this one. So how do you come to town meeting from W?
So you don't need mine.
I feel very proud of case on one side, page sixty-seven, footnote four.
Sixty-seven?
Footnote four, the Douglas case.
You're what? They're gonna do another one, yeah. They're gonna work on it. They were asking for volunteers.
In the front?
Thirty-three, three-three.
Thirty-three. To my right? Say that again Frank, fifteen-one-five?
Yes, fifteen. Fifteen-one-five.
In the center?
Sixty-four, six-four.
Sixty-four, and on the left? We have a hundred and fifty-four voters in the hall, we have a quorum. I will call this meeting to order. For those of you who were here last night, I gave you all the rules of the meeting, I'm not going to go through them again. All of the rules that I went over last night are still into play. I do want to just bring you a couple of reminders. There is no smoking on school grounds. If you feel the need that you need to go out and have a cigarette, you need to leave school grounds, you can't just go out and sit in your car. If you're parked in a fire lane, I strongly suggest that you want to go out and move your vehicle because the fire department will pay attention to that. The rule of this auditorium has been that there is no food or drink allowed, and I've been pretty lenient about allowing water, hard candies. But last night, several of the voters had to go around and pick up trash. So I'm very disappointed in those that left their trash behind. There is a trash barrel outside the door, there's another one by the stairs. If we find any trash here tonight, after you get up and leave, I will be making a fast and hard rule for Springtown meeting. So please pay attention, if you have water bottles, coffee cups, take it and put it in the trash on your way out, please. Do not leave it on the floor. If you need to exit the auditorium, you need to exit on my left, and that's to protect the integrity of this meeting, to only use this door from coming in and going out unless there is an emergency, and we do need to use all the exits, and you will be allowed to use the other exits as well. But when you return, you do need to return through this door on my left. Again, my rule for taking photographs is only for those who have asked for permission ahead of time, and I have certain members of the press that have done that, other than that, there is no photography by anyone else. Please turn off your cellphones. We have seventeen articles left, we should be able to get through these tonight. If not, if we only have one or two, I would ask the body to consider staying and finishing. We have elections coming up next week, the town clerk can't be here, so I think we can make this happen, I think we can get through these pretty quickly. Article two of our charter requires that I do a roll call of all departments, so I will do a roll call, Board of Health, Chief Assessing Officer, Community Development, Conservation, Council on Aging, Management Technology, EMS, Inspection Services, Municipal Maintenance, Planning, Police Department, Harbor Master, Town Accountant, Town Collector, Library, Water Pollution Control, Town Clerk. Article fourteen is now before you. May I have a motion? These microphones are off, you do have to turn them on, mine is the only one that's live tonight.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $200,000 for the purpose...
You need to get a little closer to your microphone.
I move that the town vote to appropriate $200,000 for the purpose of financing the repair, replacement, and/or upgrade of septic systems pursuant to agreements with the Board of Health and residential property owners, including without limitation, all costs thereof as defined in Chapter twenty-nine C, Section one of the general laws, that to meet this appropriation, the Treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow $200,000 and issue bonds or notes therefore under Chapter one-eleven, Section one-twenty-seven B and a half, and/or Chapter twenty-nine C of the general laws. That project and financing costs shall be repaid by the property owners in accordance with those agreements, but such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town, that the Treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust established pursuant to Chapter twenty-nine C, and in connection therewith to enter into a loan agreement and/or security agreement with the trust, and otherwise contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan and for any federal or state aid available for the projects or for the financing thereof, and that the Board of Selectmen or Board of Health is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the projects and to take any other action necessary to carry out the projects.
Do I have a second? To speak to the article?
Thank you, this is in...this is for round eight of the program, and is essentially become an annual town meeting article, thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted five-zero-zero, favorable action.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee, please?
Finance Committee voted eight-zero-zero in favor of this action, it's an annual program.
Is there anything further to be said on Article fourteen? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote. Because this is a borrowing article, it does require a two-thirds vote, I will try for unanimous. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passage unanimously. May I have a motion?
Article nine, I move that the town vote to rededicate for beach and recreational use in perpetuity the real property located off Swift Beach Road and One Echo Avenue in Wareham, Massachusetts, shown as lots B-one, B-two, and B-three, as shown on the town of Wareham Assessors' platte fifty-B and as on file in the Assessor's office.
Do I have a second?
Second.
To speak to the article?
The town...
Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. To the body, this article seeks to rededicate the land described in the article from quote, "general municipal purposes," unquote, to beach and recreational use in perpetuity. If passed pursuant to the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, it would take a two-thirds supermajority vote of both the Massachusetts House and the Massachusetts Senate, as well as the assent of the Governor to ever remove the land from this status. This is actually stronger and better protection than even that offered by a conservation restriction, as conservation restrictions are a creation of the legislature that can be revised or removed at any time by a simple majority vote of the legislature to amend the Community Preservation Act. Now is the time to protect this land with a use designation that meets the intent of the original Fall 2003 Town Meeting article that authorized the acquisition of the land so as to finally satisfy that body's desire to preserve the land from private development for the benefit of all to use as a public beach.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted five-zero-zero, favorable action.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted eight-zero-zero for favorable action, as this action would ensure that the land be used for the purpose which it was originally taken.
Thank you. On my right?
I'm Kate Furler, and I'm from Swift Beach, Precinct one. My understanding is the town meeting voted to accept the $1.1 million from the Community Preservation Funds in exchange for the CR, the Conservation Restriction. How is it possible that we, as the town meeting, can change that? Wasn't it a deal?
To answer the question, if anyone chooses?
Perhaps Mr. Bowen could answer it for us?
Okay, thank you. Madam Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. It doesn't change the prior vote, what this does, it puts it into a higher category of protection rather than just having a recorded deed restriction. This gives it protection under Article ninety-seven of the state constitution. It's not an inconsistent action, it's a harmonious action, and in fact, it's an action that strengthens the intent of the earlier vote to make sure that this property is used for beach and recreational purposes.
Is it true, Madam Moderator, is it true that temporary buildings could be placed on this property, such as Ferris wheels, or carnivals, or other things that would not be conducive...
To answer the question only?
That's exceptionally unlikely. The Board of Selectmen controls entertainment licenses in the town of Wareham, and also the Conservation Commission enforces the Wetlands Protection Act. I can't imagine any circumstance in which our conservation agent would ever allow the placement of a Ferris wheel there for the summer. That's just entirely outside of the purview, A, of the use that the property is supposed to have, and B, I believe that the damage incurred with putting a structure that size on there would make such a move in violation of the Wetlands Protection Act.
Further question is, did this amendment go through CPC or through Conservation Commission?
No, there's absolutely no need for that.
Thank you.
On my left?
Judy Caparicio, Swift Beach, Precinct one. I'm the new president of the Swift Beach Improvement Association, a nonprofit association since nineteen thirty-five. The entire SBIA Executive Board and most of the board members have spoken to me of their support for the rededication of the Swift Beach property for beach and recreational use. We believe this rededication satisfies the original intent for which the land was taken and would guarantee access to and enjoyment of this beach property for every resident in Wareham.
Is there anything further? On my right?
Johannes Wagner, Seventy-two Paper Mill Road. Would this prevent any future development of restrooms and concessions or so forth from the town to be able to provide facilities for people who use the beach? Obviously, that's a very, very big need, and porta-potties are really not acceptable.
To answer the question only?
To answer the question only, that land is land that is subject to storm flowage under the Wetlands Protection Act. It's also land along a riverfront under the Rivers Protection Act, which is a subsection of the Wetlands Protection Act. My best guess in terms of answering your question would be that certainly, I don't think you could ever put those kinds of facilities within two-hundred feet of the water. Whether you could put up some kind of a structure further back towards the road, I think is a little bit more of an open question. To the extent that you would ever want to do such a thing, the uses and the types of structures that you would be able to put up, even if you were allowed to under those laws, would be restricted and would have to be harmonious with this rededication. In other words, bathhouses, you can make an argument, I suppose, are ancillary to the beach-going experience. After all, in a town that's so worried about nitrogen, we want people going to the bathroom, in the bathroom, not in the water. You know, if somebody, if there were small concessions, I suppose you could make the argument that buying a hot dog at the beach is a nice thing. We see this happen in plenty of beaches all over the state. But it would really be dependent upon other factors than what you're voting on tonight, in other words, whether these were allowable uses under the Wetlands Protection Act and the Rivers Protection Act.
If I may, I'm not worried about hot dogs. You're planning a sewer project at Swift Beach, and there's no reason why any kind of a bathhouse in the future or restrooms could not connect to that sewer and be protected under the Wetlands Act. But all I'm asking is, does it absolutely prevent any kind of construction?
No.
Thank you.
On my left?
Ronina, Precinct three. I spent most of my childhood growing up summers in this area, in Swift Beach, in particular, this particular area that we're discussing tonight, and I was a lifeguard as a youth in that area. And I can tell you, I for one would love to see this area go back to the way it was, being used as a beach and a recreation area. I would ask everyone to think about voting yes, please.
On my right?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator, Sandy Slaven. The question I have is, a Conservation Commission approved the Conservation Restriction that was written for this site. Is there any overs...wait, Peter, I'm almost done. Is there any oversight of this site by any organization other than the Board of Selectmen?
To answer the question?
There would be none, and the Board of Selectmen is the authority that approves conservation restrictions in the town of Wareham, not the Conservation Commission.
Okay. Is there any entity in the town that will take oversight of this particular thing? Board of Selectmen cannot do day-to-day functions, and right now, in Swift Beach Road, we've removed the rusted fence, and now we've got people driving on this five acres of land. Where we do allow parking at Swift Nick by permit only, you can't get to this land because of the drainage ditch. I was just wondering if there was any plans to allow more parking down there, not under permit? Was there any plans to remove the structures that exist on there now, being the old concrete platforms that was recommended five years ago to be removed in order the beach to return? I was just wondering if there was any plans to do anything for that site?
I will allow Mr. Titevam to answer the question, but all of those questions really don't have anything to do with changing the repurpose. That's something that I think you would follow up upon at a later date, but I will allow you to answer very briefly those questions.
At the present time, there are no plans for any activities. The threshold here was to rededicate the land for recreational use, beach use, in perpetuity. Prior things that were put on there, I don't know that there's any plans to remove them. As far as additional features to be added, I don't know that there are any plans to add them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article nine? On my left?
Amory Pickett, Precinct one. I also grew up down Swift Beach all summers. I built my home down there, my family grew up there, my child grew up there, and all we've ever hear about, no matter where we go, or anybody that's down there, "Oh, you're from Swift Beach." "Oh, we used to grow there when we were kids," but it's not, the beach is not the same anymore. I think this is what it's all about, is putting it back to being a beach, and having the entire beach be back to being a beach, not just part of the beach. Because for when it was privately owned before, we couldn't go on that side, or we'd be told we couldn't go on it because it was private. It's not private anymore, it belongs to the town, put it back to being a beach. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said, seeing no one standing? I will call for a vote on Article nine. Because this is a repurpose of land, it does require a two-thirds vote, and I will try for unanimous. I will now call for the vote on Article nine, that the town vote to rededicate for beach and recreational use, the property at Swift Beach. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes by a two-thirds, non-counted majority. Article eighteen, may I have a motion, please?
I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $44,500 from the Harbor Services Permit's receipts reserved for appropriations account to the Harbor Masters Maintenance and Improvements account.
Do I have a second? To speak to the article?
Thank you. The Harbor Service Permit fees cannot be used for other items, so you could not hire teachers or police officers and such from it, it can only be used for the specific purposes. If you turn to page thirteen of your warrant, you'll see a substantial listing of the items and what the request is for each one. After this, if this transfer were to happen of the $44,500, the balance in the account would be $195,809. Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
The vote of the Board of Selectmen, three-dash-zero-dash-zero, favorable action. Thank you.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted six, in favor, zero, no, and zero abstained. The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article. The transfer is for appropriate harbor and waterway expenses, and as the funds have already been collected from those using Harbor Services, this article has no impact on the town's tax rate or budget.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article eighteen? Seeing no one standing at the microphones, I will now call for a vote on Article eighteen. I move that the town vote to transfer $44,500 from Harbor Services, as it appears before you. It requires a majority vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it's unanimous. May I have a motion, please?
Article twenty-three, I move that the town vote to increase the fiscal year fifteen reserve to reflect the additional community preservation anticipated funds being received from the state match for the following categories. One, historic preservation, $17,400. Two, open space, $17,400. Three, affordable housing, $17,400. Four, administration, $8,700, for a total of $60,900 from fiscal year fifteen estimated revenue.
Thank you. May I have a second? To speak to the article?
With the state approving an additional $25 million in funding for community preservation funds, it is expected that Wareham share will be seventy percent of the town CPA contribution. This request is to increase the ten percent reserve and five percent administrative fund, reflecting the additional $174,000 expected this year as required by law. The total ten percent reserve for each category will be $98,600, and administrative will be $49,300. Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Vote of the Board of Selectmen was five-zero-zero, favorable action.
May I have the vote of the Finance Committee and recommendation? You need to turn on your microphone.
Sorry. The Finance Committee voted eight-four, none against and none abstained. The Finance Committee found that this, in view of the state's increased revenue to the community preservation funds, allocating these specified funds, the balance therefore is a feasible act, we should do it.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article twenty-three, seeing no one standing at the microphones? I will now call for a vote on Article twenty-three, that the town vote to increase the FY-15 reserve for additional community preservation funds. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I move that the town vote to authorize the expenditure of $100,000 from available funds in the Water Pollution Control Facility capital expense line for the purpose of purchasing and installing a robotic closed caption TV system.
Do I have a second? To speak to the article?
This purchase is a vital part of the operation, maintenance, and repair of the approximately fifty-seven-plus miles of aging gravity sewer pipes for infiltration and inflow, including cracks, fractures, and separation of pipes. The capture of all infiltration and inflow will thereby increase the capacity to the treatment plant and decrease the cost of treating groundwater. With this purchase of this vital equipment, it will be a cost savings to the town. This equipment is currently being rented on an as-needed basis at the town rate, excuse me, at the rate of $195 per hour. Our expectation will be to use the CCTV at a minimum of three days per week. The important information here is that this is money that's already budgeted within the WPCF fund for this fiscal year. They had approximately a little over $600,000 within capital lines in that budget. The items that we presented in April have come in under budget, which allows us to purchase this, and again, we can use this year's dollars and not have to resort in using retained earnings. Thank you.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, four-zero-zero.
Thank you. And the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted six-four, zero against and zero abstained. The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article. The committee felt that purchasing this equipment is a good investment. Over time, the WPCF has had a problem with renting equipment, and it's also expensive, and since the town is now fifty-four percent sewored, and some areas have been sewored since the nineteen seventies, we're beginning to experience... we're beginning to experience some problems with it, and this technology will allow them to locate the problems and look for existing conditions of pipes in an anticipatory manner.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 15? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote on Article 15. Requires a majority vote. Are you voting to authorize the expenditure for $100,000 from the Water Pollution Control Facility, as is before you? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Article 6.
Article 6. I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $750,000 from certified free cash to the stabilization fund, per the Board of Selectmen policy.
May I have a second? To speak to the article?
Per the Board of Selectmen policy, this article seeks to transfer half of the certified free cash to the stabilization fund. You'll notice we've gone slightly over, and we're requesting half, and we're requesting $750,000. The current balance in the stabilization fund is $851,658. So after this transfer, we'll have $1,601,658. Having a healthy stabilization fund is a strong indicator of a financially stable community and can increase the town's bond rating, which in turn helps decrease borrowing costs. Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Vote of Board of Selectmen was three, zero, zero, favorable action.
May I have the vote and Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action, six in favor, zero opposed, and zero abstained. The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article. Towns are required to have an adequate stabilization fund to depend on to cover emergencies and the unexpected. Wareham has not maintained its required fund levels, and it became an audit issue with the town, which must correct. The use of certified free cash per the plan town management and the Selectmen have developed will be a start to meet the requirements needed.
Thank you. Gentleman on my right?
Jeff Swett, Cremisit Road. I'm thrilled to be asking this question. Now that we've got over a million dollars if this vote is successful in the stabilization fund, I'd be interested to know how this money is being invested.
To answer the question?
I'll ask the Finance Director to step forward, please.
John Foster, Treasurer Collector. All of the town funds are, this funding in particular is invested in collateralized funds. They are located in Rockland Trust.
And through you, moderator, to the previous speaker, and what kind of rate of return can we expect from this?
Mr. Swett, all questions should come to the moderator, then.
The rate on collateralized funds right now is very low. I believe it's approximately 0.3% interest.
On my left?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Moderator. I apologize, I'm not familiar with the Board of Selectmen policy. Is the Board of Selectmen policy to, for the indefinite future, to put, always put 50% of the certified free cash into the stabilization fund? And I guess I have a related question on that, as to what is the recommended amount that we should be keeping in the stabilization fund per our auditors or whoever might be advising us on this matter? I appreciate that it's a good idea to have, you know, the stabilization fund for borrowing purposes, for sound fiscal management. It just seems like, for lack of a better term, a lot of money to have in there.
To answer her two questions?
I'll consider it three, because the third question was, is that a lot of money? No. No, actually, it's not, when you're, when you have approximately a $48 to $50 million operating budget. You should have at least 5% of your operating budget set aside in the stabilization fund, and your free cash should be around another 5% every year, which you'll use and try and roll over. So you're looking, you should have between the two of them, approximately $5 million for us. And as you know, the budget will go up almost every year. So I'd say our goal for the stabilization fund is about $2.5 million. You'll still want to put in monies thereafter. You can adjust it once you reach that limit, so you're not doing 50%. Then you'd probably want to hit the OPEB liabilities and start hitting some of the capital stabilization funds as well. So I'm proud of this. In 2009, we had $64,000. It's the most the town has had, and it's showing that we're going towards a path of stability. But if you're asking if this is too much money, absolutely not.
Mr. Camarino? You need to turn your microphone on.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Just an observation. I think that everyone here should pat themselves on the back, and the Selectmen and the administrators.
You need to, you need to get up close and personal.
Just an observation, I think everyone here, and everyone in the town of Wareham, and the Selectmen and the administration should pat themselves on the back. This is the highest that our fund's been since I've been around and been involved, and I think that this is a great start, and all these cuts and everything we've done is proving, and there's the proof in black and white, and I think everyone should be proud of it. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article 6? Seeing no one else standing, I will call for a vote. To put money into the stabilization fund does require a two-thirds vote. I will try for unanimous. The vote comes before you, to transfer the sum of $750,000 from free cash, certified free cash, to stabilization fund. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Article 30.
I move that the $615,000 is appropriated to pay a portion of the principal redemption premium and interest on the town's $4,260,000 municipal purpose loan of the 2005 bonds dated May 15, 2005, and all other costs incidental or related thereto, that to meet this appropriation, $615,000 shall be transferred from CPA unallocated funds, and that the Board of Selectmen and Treasurer are each authorized to take any other action necessary or convenient to carry out this vote, including but not limited to issuing replacement bonds and negotiating, investing the funds in accordance with the requirements of the Internal Revenue Code, and executing an escrow agreement with a bank or trust company.
May I have a second?
Vote of Selectmen voted favorable action, five, zero, zero.
May I have the, to speak to the article? I'm sorry, Alan kind of jumped the gun. To speak to the article?
The Tremont Nail Bond was authorized on April 27, 2004, Town Meeting Article Number 26, for $1,265,930. The Bryant Farm Bond was authorized on April 27, 2004, Town Meeting Article 27, for $95,622, or 93% Tremont Nail, 7% Bryant Farm. It is to the town's financial advantage to pay down this bond debt and save in interest payments. The amount is made up of the following. Tremont Nail principal balance and interest to call is $576,463.75. Bryant Farm principal balance and interest to call is $40,811.25, as well as a $10,500 for administrative costs associated with calling the 2005 CPA bond. I believe our interest currently on this that we're paying is 4%. And as you've heard, if we earn 0.3%, it makes entirely, there's much sense to pay this down. I believe we'll save approximately a little over $100,000 on this. Thank you.
Thank you. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
We'll do it again for a second time. Favorable action by the Board of Selectmen was five, zero, zero.
May I have the vote and Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted eight in favor of this, none against and none abstained. The Community Preservation Committee has the available funds, and this is the only opportunity available from the bonding company to pay off this debt in full at this time. Paying it off now will save up to $90,000 in interest payments over the next 10 years.
Thank you. On my right?
Yes, Sandy Slaven, Treasurer of CPC. The dollar amount I was given was $627,775, not $615. The numbers I just received, total 627,774, or 775, I didn't round to the penny. I'm just questioning the amount on this article.
To answer Mrs. Slaven's question?
The $12,000 difference is the interest that was budgeted in the fiscal 2015 budget. It's already in my budget to pay. So this is the principal, the fees associated with calling this bond.
Thank you.
A follow-up question, please. What is the total amount of funds coming out of CPC for this?
As the Treasurer, shouldn't you know?
$605,000 in principal and $10,000 in fees. Six fifteen.
Is there any other persons wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I will call for the vote on Article 30. This does require a majority vote. The vote before you is to appropriate and pay a portion of the debt to pay down the loans of Bryant Farm and Tremont Nail. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Article 28. May I have a motion?
Article 28. I move that the town vote to transfer from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Fund or any other available monies in the Community Preservation Fund to grant the Wareham Land Trust the sum of $158,000 to purchase the property shown on the plan and deeds on file in the office of the town clerk. Book volume, 36,795, page 304, 4.53 acres. Assessors map, 68, Lot 1A, and book volume, 5,938, page 328, 3.16 acres. Assessors map, 68, Lot 1B.
May I have a second? To speak to the article?
The owner of the property will be the Wareham Land Trust, and the holder of the Conservation Restriction, or CR, will be the Conservation Commission. It is located at 230 Blackmore Pond Road. There are three goals for this project. One, adding important contiguous biomap and water protective acreage to our Tweedy and Barnes Conservation Property. Two, adding to our property an old railroad bed, which currently divides and prevents full access to the two largest parcels of the reservation and which will provide easy walking access to scenic views of the Sipican River. Three, provide space for parking and trailhead signage for the project. An application has been made to the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for a conservation partnership grant of $72,500. The amount to be transferred from the Wareham Community Preservation Fund in accordance with this article will be reduced by any successful award from this grant request.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, five, zero, zero.
May I have the vote and Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted eight in favor of this action, no against and no abstains. The Finance Committee recommends favorable action. The transfer from the Community Preservation Fund to the Wareham Land Trust is appropriate and within the Community Preservation Charter. The Wareham Land Trust Tweedy and Barnes Preserve is presently cut in half by a parcel 1B of this article. The second parcel, 1A, includes space for a parking lot off Blackmore Pond Road, so purchasing these two parcels will essentially complete the Tweedy and Barnes Preserve. The requested funding will purchase the two properties, it's about eight acres, and will also cover the cost of a consultant and filing fees, as well as cutting new trails and building a new parking lot. This article has no impact on the town budget.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article 28? Seeing no one standing, I will call for the vote on Article 28, that the town vote to transfer from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve Fund $158,000 to purchase property on behalf of the Wareham Land Trust, as it appears before you on the screen. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's a majority. Article 35.
Thank you. I move that the Town Meeting authorize CEDA with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to solicit proposals and convey the so-called Bay Point land as described in a filing at the office of the town clerk.
May I have a second? To speak to the article?
Madam Moderator, if you'll give me a few extra minutes, I need to explain a few things here. Article 35 is a citizen's petition. The citizen's petition is by Stephen Holmes. Mr. Holmes is not here tonight, and he asked if I could speak, at least to explain the article. What this article is, is basically that CEDA, which is the Community Economic Development Authority, was given about 7.9 acres of land back about probably eight or nine years ago on the Bay Point Golf Course property. They basically collect a rent for that property. The property is under their jurisdiction. The income basically is supposed to go to the town less expenses. There's a possibility that CEDA might consider selling the land. In order to do so, Town Meeting has to approve the sale of any land. The way this process works is very simple. CEDA has to make a decision when and if they want to sell the land. They then have to go to the Board of Selectmen under the Acts of 2005, if I remember it, and get approval of the Board of Selectmen. By going ahead and preapproving this, it would allow this to happen if and when they decide to do it. Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted, let's see, four, one, zero. Favorable action.
May I have a vote and Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted seven, zero, zero. The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article. The property in question is owned by CEDA. CEDA is looking to see if there is a better use for this property and having someone buy it rather than develop this property.
Gentleman on my left?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Bill Heaney, Precinct 1. If this article does not pass, then the process that was described by the previous speaker... If this article does not pass, then the process that was described by the previous speaker would just have to come back to this body, you know, after CEDA decides to sell it and the Board of Selectmen approve it, it would come back to this body?
To answer his question?
Yes.
So basically what this article asks us to do is to preapprove a deal that we haven't seen yet?
To answer the question?
Yes.
Stay right there, I got more. So we're being asked to approve a deal that we haven't seen yet, and the Board of Selectmen, if we approve this, the Board of Selectmen will be the final say. Is that correct?
To answer the question?
Yes.
Great. But let's just remember that the rules for selling property require that this board, that this group, town meeting, be the one to finally approve the deal. And although I have perfect faith in the sitting Board of Selectmen, you know, CEDA has done some good things, but CEDA also gave us bump outs. And so-
Mr. Heaney, please stick to the article before-
And so I don't believe that this is the, this is a smart thing to do. I mean, we could sell, decide to sell it if we approve the deal in April, and I think that that's the way it's set up, and that's the way it should be. And I urge the body to vote down this article.
Mr. Tropiano?
Yeah, actually, I was the dissenting vote, and the reason why is because I don't even know what they're asking. We haven't got any deal, we've seen nothing. We don't know what's even going on, so to bring it to the body is really premature. We should bring it to you and say, okay, this is what's going to happen, this is what we're going to get, and this is why we want to do it. And to send these things sort of arbitrarily to town meetings seems kind of crazy to me. Plus, I'm really thinking that, plus, it's actually part of a development. I don't know if anybody knows that, but they want to use it as part of a development. And I think you all should have the right to know what you're getting and what it is. I mean, I think that's the only way it should be done. And I, he's absolutely right, and that's, I urge you to vote against this.
Thank you. Mr. Camerano?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Through you. This property is being rented at the present time, am I correct?
To answer the question?
I believe we're getting $28,000 a year rental, Dominic.
And through you, Madam Moderator, another question. That money goes into the general fund?
To answer the question?
The money that we get, if you look at the contract, the town was supposed to get money less administrative expenses, if I remember right reviewing it.
So all the money except for administration fee?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Moderator, you, another question. Does anyone have any idea of a sale price of this property?
Again, I'm acting as an intermediary, so I'll do the best I can. This is not my article or anything. As far as I know, I could ask Gene Conatton, who's the chairman of CEDA, to come up. I believe CEDA has gone out and had a formal appraisal of the property, so they have some idea what the property is worth, but as far as actual figures, this is my own personal answer only. I would never go out there and publicly give out a price that you're willing to pay for something or buy, because that's what they call spilling your candy. So I would, you know, I can't give you a number, I know there's been an appraisal.
Madam Moderator, would anyone have that number?
If you would like, Mrs. Conatton is here in the audience.
Only if she wishes. And again, I think, Mr. Camerano, you have to understand that this would have to go out to bid. This would follow the normal process for the sale of property. So even if there is an appraised value, I think Mr. Slavin is correct that the town would not want to tip its hat and start putting out numbers and giving unfair advantages.
Just as an answer, the way the process works, Mr. Camerano, is that the town administrator, as the chairman officer under 30B, would put out, you know, the basic RFP for bids, and they would accept the highest bid. And they could also set a number, if the number's not reached, they don't have to sell it.
Thank you. My actual reason was, as far as a sale price, what I'm getting at is, I believe in renting things rather than selling things. I mean, we're getting a large sum of money now, a decent sum of money now, that's going, you know, and we have no mortgage on the property or nothing, so appears to me to be a win-win just to let them rent it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said on Article 35? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote. Because this does involve the sale of land, it would require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of authorizing with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to solicit proposals and convey the so-called Bay Point land, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The article fails.
I move that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of the West School, so-called, and as further described in a filing on file at the office of the Town Clerk, from the school committee held for school purposes to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes, including sale or other disposition.
Do I have a second? To speak to the article?
Following the reorganization of the schools, the West Wareham Academy, formerly West Wareham School, is no longer needed by the Wareham Public Schools for the education of students. This simply seeks to turn over the, or transfer the care, custody, and control of the West School to the town. Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, four zero zero.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action, seven zero zero.
Thank you.
The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article to transfer care, custody, and control of the West Wareham School, West Wareham Academy, from the school committee to the Board of Selectmen as the school is no longer using this building. This article is a formality as a vote of town meeting is required in order for the town to take any action relative to the building.
To speak to the article, on my right?
Yes, thank you, Sandy Slavin. Are there any restrictions on this building for the sale of it?
To answer the question only?
Yes, the previous owners of the, I believe, the Tremont Nail Company, assessors and/or assessors and/or signs, have the right of first refusal if we were to sell it.
Sir, anything, Mr. Titelbaum?
Just a point of clarification, the right of first refusal is conditioned upon the town receiving a fair market value offer.
So anything further to be said on Article 33? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote. Again, because this is a transfer of property, it does require a two-thirds vote. The motion comes before you, that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of the West Wareham School to the town. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously.
I move that the town vote to increase the spending limit of the Board of Health Rental Inspection revolving account from the $50,000 spending limit as voted in the April 2014 town meeting to $75,000.
Do I have a second? To speak to the article?
Thank you. Simply on a revolving fund, what happens is, currently the ceiling is set at $50,000. So if they bring in $100,000 in revenue, all they can ever expend is $50,000. Seeking to increase the ceiling on that to $75,000, and the revenue is generated from the fees of the program. So what this is simply trying to do is make sure that the program can take in the fees and pay for the inspections it's supposed to do. Whatever goes above the $75,000 goes into the general fund and would generally flow towards free cash. Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, three zero zero. Thank you.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted eight favorable actions, zero no, zero abstain. The Finance Committee recommends favorable action because the program is self-sufficient financially. However, when the Board of Health instituted the program, they underestimated the number of rental units in town. This is basically a housekeeping article to transfer funds from one account to the next.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article 19? Seeing no one standing, I now will call for the vote on Article 19, that the town vote to increase the spending limit of the Board of Health Rental Inspection Revolving Account, as it appears before you on the screen. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes by a majority. May I have a motion?
I move to approve Article 11 as printed in the Finance Committee report as Appendix A, and to authorize the legislature to make such changes as it deems necessary to accomplish the intent of this article.
To speak to the article?
Thank you. In planning for the implementation of this in May, I was working with the town council, and we realized that there were some issues with it, and we've brought it forward to the Board of Selectmen to bring to the body. And if approved by town meeting and subsequently the state legislature, this article would resolve conflicts between the existing sewer commissioner legislation and the Wareham Town Charter, including union contract negotiations and personnel matters, lawsuit management and resolution, and the budgeting process. The article would not alter the authority provided by the existing sewer commissioner legislation to develop and implement sewer plans and policies, to set rates, and to oversee the sewer enterprise fund. What I would ask is if, take your town meeting warrant booklet, that Finance Committee booklet, and turn to Appendix A. It would start on page 29, and then you'll look to page 30. I don't believe they're numbered. When you go to the first page, you'll see item B. What is in bold and in italics and underlined is what is being added. And is the language, well, I will read the sentence before it and then do the added language. The sentence before it reads, "The day-to-day supervision, care, and maintenance of the sewer department shall be under the supervision of the sewer superintendent." Added language is, "Except as expressly provided by the Wareham Charter, the Board of Sewer Commissioners' authority and the sewer superintendent's responsibilities are intended to pertain only to the technical operation of the sewer system and facilities. The town administrator shall continue to maintain and exercise administrative control over personnel as currently provided by the Wareham Charter. And the Board of Selectmen shall continue to be the town Wareham sole collective bargaining agent as provided for by General Law Chapter 150E." If you move to item, what is it, number two, D2, you'll see the language stricken out. "The sewer superintendent shall supervise direct and be responsible for the effect of efficient administration of all functions under his control, as may be authorized by the Charter, by bylaw, by other town meeting vote, or by requested majority vote of the Board of Sewer Commissioners." The new language is, "The sewer superintendent shall be responsible for the efficient, technical administration of the sewer system and facilities, and for implementing any such votes of the sewer commissioners as lie within that commission's jurisdiction. Except as expressly provided for in the Wareham Charter, the sewer commissioners have no control over personnel matters. That's much like the Board of Selectmen, do not have control over the day-to-day operation of the personnel matters." If you see number two, you'll see that the sewer superintendent is stricken out and town administrator is added, so it reads, "The town administrator shall appoint and remove, subject to civil service law where applicable, all sewer department subordinates and employees." And then on the last line, "Should the Board of Sewer Commissioners choose to either to inform or reject on the 15th day, the appointment made by the town administrator shall be effective." And then there are two sections added, F, which is just requesting that we actually give receive a budget by the sewer commissioners, which is much like we receive from the, from the school committee. So it states, "F, the sewer commissioner shall provide a detailed and balanced budget for the sewer system and enterprise fund to the town administrator by January 5th." There was no requirement for them to send a budget to the town administrator in the previous language. And Section 79 of the Charter shall govern the removal of the sewer superintendent." Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action, five zero zero.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted five favorable action, two not to take action, to say no, and zero abstain. Those who voted for it basically felt that there was no impact on the town tax rate on the budget. It does, however, clarify that the town administrator is responsible for labor relation issues as defined in the Town Charter. This article also requires that the sewer commissioners provide a detailed and balanced budget to the town administrator by January 5th, the same day as the school department budget is due. Those who had said no basically have had the opinion that the members of the amendments were passed, and this article, they will drastically alter the intent and purpose of the April 2013 town meeting where voters passed Article 31, creating a separate elected Board of Sewer Commissioners. They also had the opinion that the article would put total control of the water pollution control facility back into the hands of the town administrator and Board of Selectmen. The language in Article 31 was originally written as governed by the Wareham Town Charter. Each and every amendment proposed by the Board of Selectmen is, in our opinion, the opinion of those who said no, an attempt to confuse the voters and wrestle control of the water pollution control facility and the monies it holds. They also had a feeling that it would go back to the Massachusetts Legislature again, and it would stall in committee, and town council advised that that was essentially, would nullify anything anyway.
To speak to the article, on my right?
We're asking that you vote no on this article, keeping it only in the hands of sewer-
Can you state your name, please?
My name is Sherman, Precinct 3. We're hoping with this article to keep it in the hands of just sewer business, with sewer business, and not in the hands of Selectmen or the town administrator. We have other areas that the water department and the fire department stands alone, and they're doing well. We're just hoping that with sewer business, because of so many other things that have happened with sewer business, that those things of, can just stay with sewer commissioners. It seems like there'll be too many hands in the pot. Sewer commissioners have to answer to the Selectmen and town administrator. I mean, how many hands do we need in this? And can we, now, someone speak to this article in the finance?
Do you have a specific question?
I would like to know, we, you had two people vote against it, so can someone speak against whoever voted no?
I believe Mr. Lincoln gave the minority vote, but certainly they are welcome to stand up, just as you have, and answer the question. The question, just to answer the question only as to why you were opposed?
Why I voted no?
Correct.
Well, I'm going to read this so I can get onto my two minutes. Article 11 is not with the town meeting, overwhelmingly voted for in both two plows- Overwhelmingly voted for in both two twelve, twenty twelve and twenty thirteen. We voted for and need independent Board of Sewers Commissioners, separate from the Board of Selectmen. Sewer commissioners who will have strong oversight over all aspects of the water pollution control facility, and most importantly, over the monies it holds. If you take a look at the first line in bolded type in your Appendix A, this bolded type is what the Board of Selectmen are proposing with these amendments. And it says, and I'm quoting, "The Board of Sewer Commissioners' authority and the sewer superintendent's responsibilities are intended to pertain only to technical operation of the sewer system and facilities." This language in its, throughout the amendments, limits the new sewer super commissioners' oversight to a technical role only. It removes them totally from any financial oversight. If Article eleven passes, it will reduce the new sewer commissioners to nothing more than a technical advisory board. And they can be ignored. I know, I'm one of them. They will be answerable not to the sewer users or the people who elected them, but to the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator. With passage of Article eleven, the current Board of Selectmen will regain authority and total financial control over the water pollution control facility, and in addition, over control of the new sewer commissioners. Now, maybe some of these ideas that they have, suggestions that the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator and our attorney have made in the future, after our Board of Sewer Commissioners are seated, they could consider them, but they should not be imposed on them prior to them even being elected by the current Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
We didn't vote for that. We voted for standalone sewer commissioners.
Gentlemen on my left?
Thank you very much. Ron Robinson, Precinct Three. Let me see, where do I start here? April twenty-second, two thousand and thirteen. The Springtown Meeting voted in favor of Article thirty-one at that time that established a sewer commission in the town of Wareham. August two thousand and thirteen. The Massachusetts Legislature began the approval process by referring that article to the municipalities and the regional government committees. May twenty-second, two thousand and fourteen. The Governor of Massachusetts signed into law that act providing for a sewer commission in the town of Wareham. The town residents at that Springtown Meeting in two thousand and thirteen made it clear regarding the issues of the sewer commissioners in Wareham and their responsibilities. Issues of content in the article, as well as the overall intent of the article, were hashed over, and ultimately, Article thirty-one establishing the sewer commission was approved by Town Meeting. What we have before us here today is Article eleven. This article aims to undo and alter the language and the intent of the article that was signed into law by our governor on, in May of two thousand and fourteen.
Thirty seconds.
A few years ago, Wareham residents and voters were mildly criticized for not exercising our rights. We exercised our rights at that meeting and gave overwhelming approval to that Article thirty-one. I say no, no, no. No on Article eleven. Let's not be fooled into thinking that this article does not drastically change and alter the original intent of the voters at that, at that Town Meeting in two thousand and thirteen. Thank you.
Gent, on my right?
Herr Williams, Precinct One. I agree with the previous two speakers, but I'd like to point out in the appendix, it says, "are intended to pertain only to technical operation of the sewer systems and facilities." I think Mr. Campania has plenty of technicians down there. We don't need any more to pertain to the sewer systems. What we need is an independent sewer system, sewer board, which we voted for back in the last Town Meeting. And I urge everybody to vote no on Article eleven.
Thank you. Mr. Tittlebaum?
Yes, thank you. I urge that the voters pass this. To the question, and this has been asked of me. There's actually some people out there who are so confused that they think that if this article passes Town Meeting, but doesn't get done in the legislature, lickety-split in time for the spring election, that there won't be a spring election. That's not true. The legislation has been signed into law by the governor. It's on the books. There will be an election on the first Tuesday in April for five new sewer commissioners, and on May first, they will take over. Second, the Board of Selectmen has zero interest in the day-to-day operation of either the water pollution control facility, or the town sewers, or who in the town work, is employed there to, below the sewer superintendent level. Since I've been on the board, we've acted solely as a policymaking board. We've had nothing to do with personnel matters, other than negotiation of union contracts. Third, the existing law is quite different than the original law that this body passed in two thousand and ten, and creates problems that needs to be fixed. That's why this legislation is here before you tonight. First is that currently, the incoming sewer commissioners do not have a set deadline they have to meet to provide their budget to the Town Administrator. The school department has independent authority over their budget, but yet they have a deadline by which they have to submit it to the Town Administrator, so that he can put the budget together, so we can all get together here in April and vote on the budget. I don't see why the sewer could, it's such a horrible thing to ask the sewer commissioners to do the same thing. I would hope also that we would want to reiterate that negotiating authority for union contracts lies with the Board of Selectmen. That's under the general laws. You can't supersede that with a Charter vote. You can't supersede that with legislation that needs to be spelled out clearly.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. Third, the hiring authority for the position of sewer superintendent needs to remain in the hands of the Town Administrator. As legislation stands right now, that position would no longer be a union position on May first, which could lead to an exorbitant salary being handed to any incoming sewer superintendent. I'm sure Mr. Scampino would like that, but the voters should be very cognizant that if you take somebody out of the union and you make them an exempt employee, they typically get a lot higher salary. Finally, you know, the idea that we're trying to take money, if we were trying to take money, this article would give us control over the enterprise fund. That's where the money is, folks. That's the vault where the money is. We're not trying to grab it. May I have thirty seconds more from the body?
I will not cut you off in the middle of your sentence. You may have thirty seconds more.
Thank you. There's no attempt in here to steal back the policymaking aspects of the sewer commissioners. They will decide where the sewers are built. They will decide how they are repaired. They will decide what monies to go for from the state. They will have utter policymaking powers, the same as we do currently as the existing sewer commissioners. So this is not a power grab. It's simply to align the sewer commissioners and the sewer department into the town government. Previous speaker said we have separate districts. That's not what this was supposed to be, folks. It was supposed to be a policymaking board, and that's what it will stay with this legislation. Thank you.
Gentlemen on my right?
Tom Vicki, Precinct Three. I agree with most of what's, you know, proposed in this article. The issue that I have is, as the structure currently is, the superintendent that's hired for this position, as the current structure is, the Board of Selectmen have say over who's hired as the superintendent. I would like that authority to remain with the separate sewer commissioners. That the sewer commissioners should not be involved in the day-to-day running of the, of the personnel and so forth, as the, as the previous speaker has mentioned. But I think the sewer commissioners should have a responsibility to appoint the superintendent, just as the Board of Selectmen currently have that authority, acting either as Selectmen or as sewer commissioners, to appoint that person. And so, for that reason, I would ask that you reject this article, and come back at a previous, at a next Town Meeting with an amendment to that, and correct some of the flaws that may be in this article. So I ask you to vote against it.
Gentlemen on my left?
Thank you, Madam Moderator, Bill Heaney, Precinct One. I urge support of this article, and I'll tell you why. The previous speaker mentioned that the districts operate under this kind of an arrangement that she was proposing, and they do fine. The fact is, the districts are separately incorporated subsidiaries of, I guess, Mass. General Laws or something. But they are, they are incorporated separately by themselves. And this is not, the sewer commissioners operate under the authority of the town. And when someone is going to be sued over a sewer issue, it's not going to be the sewer commissioners. It's not going to be the sewer superintendent. It is going to be the Board of Selectmen. And, and that's just a fact. Now, as far as the the hiring of employees is concerned, that is a responsibility of the Town Administrator on the union contracts under Mass. General Laws. And from that perspective, he is the person, or, you know, whoever occupies that position is the person who is responsible for, for discipline as, as well as hiring and firing. All this article does is, is just clarify these kinds of things. It's not taking away any kind of responsibility from the sewer commissioners. And, and as far as I'm concerned, the sewer commissioners, you know, should, should be elected on April first and, and have at it. So I urge support of the article.
Thank you. Selectmen Trappiano?
Yeah, a couple of things. First off, I know what, I know what everybody's saying, but I know what, I sort of think I understand what the background is, is everybody thinks that we're trying to steal the money. Matter of fact, I've heard it said that, you know, we're trying to get the money, control of the money. It's all about control of the money. Well, in actuality, all monies that are expended by town government are controlled right here. All of you control that expenditures. It has to come in front of you, whatever expenditures there are, has to come in front of you, and you have to approve them. That's how it works. No one can spend money in government without your approval. That's the nice thing about Town Meeting. You all get to come here and decide how you want your money spent. That's probably the best thing about having Town Meeting. If we had a mayor, you wouldn't have that. But you do here. You have the right to say how we're going to expend that money. Secondly, we don't appoint anyone, the Board of Selectmen. We do have the right to say, well, we don't like who you're choosing, and we should go back out and get somebody else. But the Town Administrator does the appointments. He does the research, decides who's, he's going to choose. He brings it and says, okay, this is who I've chosen. Now, if we have some issues with it, we might say, well, we don't particularly like that person. We'd like you to go and try for some others. Maybe there wasn't, maybe we think there's not enough people involved in the, in the pool, or something of that nature. But other than that, he's the appointing authority.
Thirty seconds.
We don't pick whoever it is. We just don't do that. This really clarifies some of the issues. One of the things we're really concerned about is being able to set a tax rate. If the sewer commissioners don't have to give us that report, we can't set the tax rate. If we can't set the tax rate, we can't get free cash. We can't even come here and get our budget approved because we need to have that clarification. They need to give us those reports. And that's very important that they do, and it was missed in the legislation. By the way, it was in the original legislation that you voted in two thousand and ten.
Time.
And that's all I want you to understand. So it's very important that we pass these changes. They don't mean anything. Nobody's trying to get your money.
On my right?
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Paul, formerly of Twelve Mound Poison Road, and I strongly recommend to vote against Article twelve.
Article eleven?
Excuse me, Article eleven, excuse me. I beg to differ with the gentleman that just previously spoke. We're not in control of the budget. Ten years ago, we had to allocate eighteen thousand dollars for my property on Twelve Mound Poison Road. We bought a second property, so thus far, to date, I'm out thirty-six thousand dollars. And I just think there's too many questions, so many misinformation over the last couple of years, that for once, I would recommend some caution. Let's vote no. We can allow the sewer commissioners to have strong oversight and see what they recommend in the next couple of months, and I'm looking forward to what they have to say. And again, I vote to vote no on Article eleven.
Mrs. Brunk?
Ladies and gentlemen, I was a huge advocate for the sewer commissioners, and I continue to be a huge advocate for them. So was it Mr. Slaven. So was it Mr. Tittlebaum. Everyone sitting up there, Mr. Trappiano, we were all. We were all instrumental. The initial one never got passed by the legislation, but it wasn't this board. This board is the ones that came to rush it through for us. They realize the problem. They're dealing with the problem. What you folks don't realize is the complexity of dealing with union employees. Now, sewer commissioners, they're going to come in, we're going to be, they're going to be volunteers from any walk of life. They're not going to have the expertise to deal with the personnel issues that we have to abide by. Common sense here, folks dictates, let the expert, if, if he does a bad job, we don't hire him next year. But you know what? He's doing a damn good job, and so are these folks. They're here, they've been advocating for every, for the sewer commissioners' jobs along with all the rest of us. Give it, don't be so pessimistic.
Thirty seconds.
This, they're only looking to clarify and make things easier. And these folks up here that you're questioning are the ones that are passing it, putting it through for us. Thank you, and please vote with the voice of reason.
On my left?
Donna Ashley, Precinct Six. I just have kind of a question, and I think it's clarification and then a statement. I believe it was said that the board worked with Mr. Bowen on this, our attorney, and I believe the wording then was probably, a lot of that was due to the way it legally would need to be with the union contracts being needed to go through the town, and that, Mr. Bowen, could you legally, tell me that you did have a hand in the wording of this?
To answer her question?
Madam Moderator, I can answer that either yes, or I can explain what I did. I, I'm not quite sure which was the question.
I'd like the explanation.
Oh, I'd be happy to provide the explanation. Madam Moderator, through you to the previous speaker in the meeting. I'd like to go through some of the points that were made in reference to the suggested changes. The first point that I recall hearing was that the suggested changes were an effort to put fiscal control into the hands of the Board of Selectmen rather than in the sewer commissioners. And I can assure you, if a request had been made to me to come up with a way to do that, what you see in front of you is not what I would have suggested. The solution, if the Selectmen wanted to have fiscal control over the enterprise fund, I would have suggested an article that went as follows, to see if the town will vote to repeal the enterprise fund as provided for by Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three, F and a half. And if Town Meeting had voted that, that would have put all the money and control in the hands of the Board of Selectmen. So that's not what I suggest. The next point is, there was a reference made by a speaker to the change, if you look at Appendix A, and you look at subsection B, and you see that bold language down there in the first section. There are some very important words that were omitted in the presentation. Now, keep in mind that it's only the capital, the bolded, underlined words that are being suggested as an addition to the legislation that is already in effect. So I'd like to focus your, your attention on the first few words, "except as expressly provided by the Wareham Charter." Well, as of right now, all the words in here that are not in bold are part of the Wareham Charter. And as it relates to fiscal control, I think if you look at the fourth sentence of subsection B, and I'll read it so you don't have to count all the sentences. What it says, and this is the law right now, "The powers and authority of the Board," and that's the sewer commissioners, "shall include oversight of the sewer enterprise fund, setting rates and charges for the use of sanitary sewer system, responsibility for appointment to the sewer superintendent as set forth therein." So just to address another point that someone made, the Board of Selectmen do not appoint the sewer superintendent, "and providing advice to the Board of Selectmen relating to intergovernmental agreements concerning sanitary sewers." So, when you see those words, "except as expressly provided", that means that that fourth sentence gives the sewer commissioners fiscal control. gives the sewer commissioners fiscal control, because that is except as expressly provided. It's right there. So whoever read the bold language to mean that they're just simply the technical, you know, they're pulling the levers and reading the dials, ignored those words and ignored that fourth sentence. So it just respectfully suggests that that reading, that they're simply lever pullers and meter readers, is legally incorrect. Dropping down to subsection D, a previous speaker said that the sewer superintendent is appointed by the Board of Selectmen. That is incorrect. As I said, the non-bold language is the law that is in effect right now, the law that is in effect right now and for which no change is sought, reads, "The appointment of a sewer superintendent shall be made by the sewer commission and shall become effective of the 15th day following the day in which notice of the appointment has been filed with the Board of Selectmen, et cetera." Nobody's seeking to change that. That stays exactly the same. Now, an argument that I had heard against this previously at the FinCom meeting was that a lot of the suggested changes were already covered by the charter. Would that it were quite as clear as that? And that's where I'd like to direct your attention to subsection I, because I think there's some very important language in the current law that you're going to want to take a look at. Now, in I, you see some stricken-out language, that's the law as it is in effect right now, and then you see the bolded language that would be substituted right below that. Let me read to you the law as it is in effect right now. "The sewer superintendent shall supervise, direct, and be responsible for the efficient administration of all functions under his control, as may be authorized by charter." Okay, that's fine. "By bylaw," okay. "By other town meeting vote." I think that's great, that gives an opportunity for you folks to have your say on what should be done. "Or by requested majority vote of the Board of Sewer Commissioners." Think about what that means. That means if a majority vote of the sewer commissioners comes up with a vote, some suggested duties that are in conflict with town meeting vote, in other words, what you voted, is in conflict with a bylaw, which you also would have voted, or with the charter, the sewer commissioners by simple majority vote can nullify your vote, the bylaw, or the charter. Now, I don't speak to policy issues. I don't know if that was the original intent of town meeting when it voted for this. If it was, that's fine. If it wasn't, then you may wish to consider the language that's suggested there, underlined and in bold. The point of these changes was merely to clarify the lines of personnel control. It is the purpose of the charter to make sure that personnel falls under the hands of the town administrator. And with respect to all municipal side departments, conservation, Board of Health, Planning Board, that's the way it works. The town administrator is responsible for personnel administration. As you can see, the way this was voted, and perhaps it was your intent, you gave the sewer commissioners the opportunity to overrule not only your express vote at town meeting, not only your express vote at town meeting to adopt bylaws, but also the charter. I'm not going to presume to suggest to you whether that was a good idea or a bad idea, but I just think it's important for you to be very clear on what it was that resulted from this legislation, and will result without amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Bowen, I appreciate that. I had need of clarification, and that does clarify for me. I just want to state that I think that this was worked out with our legal attorney. We have Mr. Bowen here for a reason, and that's to keep, as someone mentioned, to keep us away from lawsuits, away from things that could get us into trouble. And I do think he's done a good job of that, and I believe our town administrator has also done well, and I know from experience that that's where the legal arbitration for unions comes in. And I just, at this point, I think we've got to learn to trust a little bit more those people who we have working for us, and I see the flaws here, I've studied it much way, and your explanation, Mr. Bowen, tells me that I would suggest, and really, my opinion would be to vote this article and these changes in. Thank you.
Gentlemen, on my right, I believe you have one minute left of your time.
Herb Williams, Precinct 1. I'd like to take exception to a couple of statements. I'll start with a poor lady in Ridge. She said that people wouldn't, on the sewer committee, wouldn't know how to negotiate. I've been in the transportation business for over 45 years, I negotiated contracts for years and years and years. There will be people like me probably on there that will have experience voting, dealing with contracts. I've had more experience than town administrators, so that's... The other exception I'd like to make is, I heard that they wouldn't get the budget in on time. If you can make the school committee get the budget in on time, you can make the sewer committee get the budget on time. And the third thing is, I heard that this was not a power grab. Why, we voted for this last spring, and now it's all come back to go back to the selectmen again. I don't understand that at all. Thank you.
Selectman Slavin?
If you want to go back, this is a difficult process, et cetera. I actually wrote the article for the fall town meeting of 2010 through the Charter Review Committee. I also did the one in 2012. The 2010 article, which passed almost unanimously, which got stale in the House and Senate because of other reasons, not ours, basically was what should have been accepted. It had a business manager in place, and basically that person there was to overall take care of the actual department itself. The sewer superintendent was to run the actual function of the facility. What happened was, from 2010 to 2013, the article got changed and pieces got taken out and taken out. When you take out the selectmen out of the mix when they were commissioners, there are certain duties and responsibilities that went with them when it was split apart. And when you start to take out the town administrator, et cetera, to make it look like it's simple and easier, you end up with issues. There is nothing right now that says the sewer commissioners have to have a budget in by any date. By charter, everybody else has a set date. We just did this a year ago. We fixed these issues. All I'm trying to get at is, there's nothing here, and I'm the last person that anybody in this audience should expect to try and do something like this, because I put my hot blood into getting this done for four years. And it bothers me that people actually think that the selectmen are trying to do something. All we're doing is trying to clean up some areas that are going to cause problems for the town going forward. I would hope you at least at this point here, trust what I have to say, because I'm the one who put this together for you originally. Thank you.
Gentleman on my left?
Thank you, Mrs. Moderator. Ron Enos, Precinct 3. You know, this article, in essence, just organizes for accountability, from what I can see. Earlier, I heard a couple of comments about the fire district, water district. I happen to be one of the prudential committee members, which is, in essence, the Board of Selectmen for that district. And we are organized in a manner that is appropriate with this Article 11, whereas the budgets have to be, by charter, given to us as a body in order to make the timelines associated with state law. So this is really just organizing this for accountability, to keep everyone accountable, to do their job as specified. I would urge the body to vote favorably for this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jordan? Need to use the microphone. Turn your microphone on, please.
I would like to make an amendment to this article. I would need a piece, an amendment.
Please state your amendment.
I would like to strike out parentheses, B parentheses, the wording, "except as expressly provided by the Wareham Charter, the Board of Sewer Commissioners, authority, and the sewer superintendent's responsibility are intended to pertain only to the technical operation of the sewer systems and its facilities."
Do I hear a second?
I have a second.
Can I have that in writing, please?
I also have a second one I would like to do.
Well, you can't do two, if you want to make one amendment.
One at a time?
No. Are you making one whole amendment?
Oh, well, then I'll have to continue on.
Okay.
For my next amendment. And in, and I would like to replace, I would like to strike, wait a minute. And in subsection, parentheses, small i, close parentheses, "The sewer superintendent shall be responsible for the efficient technical administration of the sewer system and facilities." That's not the one I want. Again, I'm saying, parentheses, I, enclosed parentheses, I want to... "The sewer superintendent shall be responsible for the efficient technical administration of the sewer system and facilities, and for the implementation of any such votes of the sewer commissioners as lie within their jurisdiction." I want the technical administration taken out, and I want the subsection up the top that's been all lined out put back in.
Can I have that in writing, please?
Yep. Do I need a... That would be, "The sewer superintendent shall supervise, direct, and be responsible for the efficient administration of all functions under his control, as may be authorized by the charter, by bylaw, by other town meeting votes, or by requested majority vote of the Board of Sewer Commissioners." I want that put in, left in. Right now, it's lined out, I want it left in.
I need to have it in writing, it's just too hard for me to follow along with you. So you want to, under a section I, you want to get rid of...
I want everything that's stricken out. I want that put back in.
And then what about the second paragraph?
Okay. So I want all of that left in, except for the line that says, "by a vote of the Board of Sewer Commissioners." Requested by a vote of the Sewer Commissioners.
Okay, I need to have it in writing. One of the problems I have as town moderator is, when people make amendments to articles like this, it makes it very difficult for the body to follow along. And I talked to the town clerk earlier today, I think we're going to be getting together after the first of the year and making some rules. It's very difficult, and I think one of the rules that she and I probably will be talking about, when we have motions like this, they need to be in print for everyone. I find it very difficult sometimes to try to sort through this, and I can't imagine you sitting out there trying to follow along as well. So I think that may be something in trying to approve town meeting, that when we do have complicated amendments, that we may require those who make these amendments to provide handwritten copies for everyone. Mrs. Jordan, I need to have a copy of that, so that I can read that to the entire body? In some towns, they require 72 hours in advance that all amendments have to go to the moderator. None are accepted on the floor, so different towns have different rules.
shall supervise, direct, and be responsible for the efficient administration of all functions under his control, as may be authorized by the charter, by bylaw, by other town meeting vote." So that's the only thing that would be under section I. Then in section B, you want to strike out, "Except as expressly provided by the Wareham Charter, the Board of Sewer Commissioners, authority, and sewer superintendent's responsibilities are intended to pertain only to the technical separation of the sewer system and facilities." Are intended to pertain only to the technical operation of the sewer system and facilities. You want that stricken. Did I get everything? Is that, is that what your amendment is? To speak to her amendment? On my right?
Madam Moderator, Cliff Sylvia, Precinct 1. I was sort of on the fence on this article, and I think some really good arguments have been made on either side, both by the proponents and the opponents. However, I got to honestly say that I'm going to vote against this amendment only because, in my advanced chronology, I don't understand it. And I think that to have a complexed amendment at this time, when this thing, when this article has been vetted by a legal attorney, and is simply more of a housekeeping matter in terms of clarification, as I said before, I was on the fence, but I can't, I can't support the amendment, because it's too confusing, it is too complicated, and it, I believe, it goes beyond the scope of the original article. Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you. On my right?
I concur with my colleague on the school committee. I am a firm believer that we all suffer from unintended consequences when we legislate on the fly. And while I think both proponents and opponents are acting in good faith, I am uncomfortable with amendments on the fly when the consequences are unknown. I do have a question. One is, Attorney Bowen stopped reading in, under section D. It does, and section D does give the right of the Board of Selectmen to reject the superintendent proposed by the sewer commissioners. I can understand why five elected sewer commissioners might be uncomfortable with another five elected individuals having the power to reject their appointment. And it does seem, and of course, this was part of the original language, but that does seem a little bit of a, it's sort of comparable to the school committee wanting to hire a superintendent, and the Board of Selectmen saying, "Nice idea, but we reject it." So I'm sympathetic to the idea that maybe we don't want to have the power to reject the sewer commissioner's appointment. But the second question I have is a budgetary one, and Madam Moderator, you can decide who can answer this question if people so choose. One of the, and I think some people in the audience may remember this, one of the very contentious aspects of the enterprise fund budget was the indirect costs.
Mr. Sw... I'm going to stop you right there. The only reason I'm going to stop you is because right now... The only reason I'm going to stop you is because right now, the discussion should be on the amendment and the amendment only. And that's to take out certain language.
I could make an argument that it's part of that language, but fine. Okay.
Okay. And I'm going to have Mr. Attorney Bowen answer your question.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. To the previous speaker, the reason why I stopped reading under subsection d is I didn't feel it was necessary to continue reading because that is part of the law that is now in effect and is not part of the package of changes that is before you tonight. And so the system of which you were speaking and apparently to which you objected is the one that the meeting has already approved.
Thank you. On my left?
Madam Moderator, to the selectman or the town administrator, that article that was voted in by town meeting, the original article that the amendment actually speaks to, that was approved by the Attorney General of the State of Massachusetts?
To answer the question.
The Attorney General of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts only approves bylaws. What happens when you vote a charter change is it goes up to the Massachusetts Legislature for discussion, deliberation, and three readings, all the process that goes on up on Beacon Hill. And then, once it's passed by both houses, it's either vetoed by the governor or signed into law by the governor. It is not reviewed by the Massachusetts Attorney General.
Okay. So has this been approved by our legislature? State legislature?
All right. Let's let the, since the town clerk is the person that has to send anything that is voted at town meeting up to the AG's office, I think I'm more comfortable having her explain that. Sure.
Good evening. Whenever we have a charter change, it has to go to the Attorney General. They have 30 days to look it over to make sure it is within the laws, the Constitution of Massachusetts. They send me an approval or they okay it, I guess, as it were. And from there, of course, it goes to the ballot.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator, this is explanation. This is a special act. This is not a regular bylaw or whatever that was done. The special act goes from the Board of Selectmen and basically gets forwarded. And what happens is that it goes to the House and Senate. Usually, the Senate acts first. It goes to the lawyers at the Senate to review to make sure it hasn't had any conflicts with pre-existing law. And that's how they do it. They do have it through their own legal system. They have their own set of lawyers. One approves it, then the other one approves it. If it gets voted in both House and Senate, it then goes to the governor for approval. The Attorney General does not get directly involved with a special act.
Thank you.
Okay. But basically, I guess my point is that it's already been approved somewhere along the line, in tune with all of our other regulations, laws, and standards with the state of Massachusetts. So I guess I'm confused if this isn't going to remain an enterprise fund. And it would be, I mean, wouldn't the sewer still remain an enterprise fund?
Yes.
So that's not going to change. So those will still have the same regulations as it does today, as it will in a year from now, with or without this legislation. So I am very confused as to why we need to make these adjustments. And I just don't agree with the changes. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen on my right?
Madam Moderator, Barb Russo, Precinct 2. I was going to raise a point of order. And probably you will say that it is not an order. But through you to the town council, I know we don't operate, per se, under Robert's Rules of Order. But it seems to me that this amendment and these that have been suggested drastically increase the scope of this entire article. And if it does, then it should be ruled out of order for expanding the scope. Now, he may disagree with, and say, "Well, Robert's Rules don't apply here." But I think this has created such confusion and in terms of increasing the scope that we are, we're outside our territory of expertise in doing this with these amendments coming up at the 11th hour.
Town Council.
Madam Moderator, through you to the previous speaker, questions of scope lie within the exclusive jurisdiction of the moderator. And if I can read from chapter 39, section 15 of our general laws, it says, "The moderator shall preside and regulate the proceedings, decide all questions of order, and make public declarations of all votes." So the question of whether an item is within the scope is for Madam Moderator to determine. And she has determined that the gentle person's proposed amendment is within the scope. The rest lies with the body to determine the efficacy of the amendment.
Thank you. If I could just make a comment. I think that, I mean, we've worked the last five years on trying to get this straightened out. This has been a nightmare in the town of Wareham for most of the citizenry. We are now prepared to move forward. As I read this, this does the job. Now, we're at the 11th hour, trying to destroy all the work that has been done. And we're going to substitute language, which we don't know how effective it's going to be. We are wordsmithing this entire town charter proposal. It is wrong. We have a proposal here, debate it on its merits, and let's vote for it and move on and get this issue settled once and for all. Thank you.
On my left? To speak to the amendment only?
Thank you very much. I'd like to, Madam Moderator, speak to the amendment. I've heard some discussion earlier. And I've heard some talk about that these amendments don't mean anything. There's no move about to do anything, to take anything away from anyone. And then we talked about the amendment in section 3.7, in parentheses B. And if that's the case, just let me read part of this. And if that's the case, why do we even need it? It basically says, "Except as expressly provided by the Wareham Charter, the Board of Sewer Commissioners' authority and sewer superintendent's responsibilities are intended to pertain only to the technical operation of the sewer system and facilities." Well, if that's the case, then why even have it in the first place? If it doesn't mean anything, why did you put it in there? So through you, Madam Moderator, I'd like to just say that if it doesn't, once again, if it doesn't mean anything, why do we have it? And I think that the amendment makes a lot of sense. Let's just strike it. If it doesn't mean anything, strike it and take it out. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney Bowen.
I urge the body to vote down the amendment and proceed with the main motion as it's been provided. You just heard Attorney Bowen go through each and every single one of these changes. He provided a logical basis for why he and the town administrator, and I want to emphasize that because we've been accused of a power grab here. This was brought to the selectmen by the town administrator and town council. You just heard town council go through very logically, very clearly, very concisely why each and every one of these changes is in here. He provided a basis for it in terms of the smooth operation of the administration of this town. He told you in no uncertain terms that this would not have anything to do with taking away the authority of the sewer commissioners to set rates, to do new projects, and to be a policy board over the sewer department in the exact same fashion that the Board of Selectmen is a policy board over town affairs. So I urge the body to vote down the amendment. There's no reason to change around the language. It's been carefully considered by our town administrator, who has to work with this stuff, remember, and our town council, who we pay rather handsomely to come up with good language. Thank you.
On my right?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. Sandy Slavin. The amendment for article i has removed the words, "for the Board of Sewer Commissioners to have any oversee of the sewer superintendent." "The superintendent shall supervise, direct, and be responsible for," et cetera, et cetera, "as defined by the charter, bylaws, and town meeting vote." There's absolutely nothing in there that says the sewer commissioners have any say over the superintendent. I believe this amendment is flawed. Thank you.
On my right?
I move the question.
We have a motion before us to move the question. It is not debatable. It requires two-thirds vote. I will try for unanimous. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes by a majority. We have now before you Article 11, as amended by Mrs. Jordan. She would like to, under section B, strike out, "Except as expressly provided by the Wareham Charter, the Board of Sewer Commissioners' authority and sewer superintendent's responsibilities are intended to pertain only to the technical operation of the sewer system and facilities." Under i, she would like to strike out, "The sewer superintendent shall be responsible for the efficient technical administration of the sewer system and facilities and for implementing any such votes of the sewer commissioners as lie within the commissioners' jurisdiction. Except as expressly provided by the Wareham Charter, the sewer commissioners have no control over personnel matters." And insert, "The sewer superintendent shall supervise, direct, and be responsible for the efficient administration of all functions under his control as may be authorized by the charter, by bylaw, by other town meeting..." Period. "Other town meeting vote." This requires a majority vote. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The amendment fails. You now have before you the original motion. Is there anything further to be said on the original motion?
I'd like to make an amendment to move this article to further study.
Do I have a second?
This is too confusing.
Can you please give your name?
Mary Scasiotti, Precinct 1.
Can I have that in writing, please?
Sure.
We have a motion before us for further study. Is there anything to be said on the proposed amendment for further study?
Yes, Madam Moderator. On the amendment solely, I urge the body to vote this down. This has been available for people to see in its present form. And since we don't have an amendment, there's nothing possibly confusing about this. People have had this in their hands. It's been available for over months now. There's been plenty of time to look at this. You've heard plenty of debate tonight. You've heard what the issues are. I don't think that kicking this off till the spring town meeting is going to increase our understanding of these issues anymore. I urge the body to vote down the amendment.
On my left, to speak to the amendment?
Judge Barrett, Precinct 5. In my other role as chairman of the Prudential Committee for the Wareham Fire District, I will tell you that if you do not mandate this kind of interaction now, while you can, it will haunt you forever. And I urge you to defeat the amendment and go forward with the article.
On my left?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Bill Heaney, Precinct 1. I also urge you to vote down the amendment. But I also urge that we take up the article with no more debate, essentially moving the question, although I can't do that right now. But I'll come back. But I do urge you to vote down the amendment.
On my left, to speak to the amendment for further study.
Yes, Carbone, Precinct 1. I'm actually in favor of further study. There's pieces of this that I agree with and some that I do not. And having this rewritten collectively to, for the body to understand. And there's no apparent rush to get this out of the place because I honestly feel we're trying to fix a problem that doesn't exist. And there is a shift of power. And if it's this body or the selectman currently or the town administrator, those entities change too often. So trusting and believing into one and allowing this power to change, I'm not just approve of yet. So in favor of further study.
Gentlemen on my right?
Yeah, good evening. Manfred Vigand, Precinct 1. I followed this a little bit. And I also listened carefully to what the town council had to say. But being a lawyer, not a municipal lawyer, I have some problems with that, the objections that Mr. Bowen had to the current language. Because I didn't see, particularly in subsection i, that there was a hierarchy that the commission could say, could basically overturn what the charter said. It's just a mentioning of the authorities that the superintendent has to follow. It doesn't say anything about the hierarchy. And concerning the difficulty of this amendment, not of the article, I think there, I don't see really that this is really well conceived. I mean, I agree, for instance, that the personnel issues should say maybe with the town administrator. But the other language is very dubious. I mean, why say, "except as particularly provided in the charter" when we have defined the authority of the commission? I think the language is not very good. And we should not, and for that reason, I think we should really think about further discussion of this. And not because it's difficult to rush to a vote now.
Thank you. Mrs. Brunk?
I'd like to move the question.
Thank you. We have a motion before us to move the question. There is no debate. I will try for unanimous. All in favor of moving the question, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? We will move on to take a vote on the amendment by Mrs. Scasiotti, that this article be moved for further study. It requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The amendment fails. We now are back to the original Article 11. And we have spent quite a bit of time on this. And as my role of moderator, I do have the ability to, if I feel that we have discussed this thoroughly and there really isn't any new information being given, to move this along. So Mr. Sylvia, you were standing.
I move the question.
Thank you, because if you hadn't, I was. So the vote will now come on Article 11, as it was originally presented. To approve Article 11 as printed in the Finance Committee report at Appendix A, this requires a majority vote. All those in favor of Article 11, as you see it on the screen and as printed in your appendix, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes by a majority. Article 29. I think we only have four or five more articles. So bear with us and we can get through this. Article 29 may have a motion.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve a grant to the Open Space Committee, the sum of $50,000 to fund playground rehabilitation for those existing playgrounds that have been identified as being the most critical by the Recreation Assessment Report.
Do I have a second? To speak to the article?
The deadline for submitting a CPA grant for the fall town meeting is the first Tuesday in June. The Recreation Assessment will not be completed until the end of August. The deadline for articles submitted by a town committee is August 15. So spring town meeting would be the first period a grant could be acted upon for any specific playground. Passing this article will allow the rehabilitation process to begin when the report is completed.
May I have the vote of the selectman?
Board of Selectmen voted favorable action 5.00.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted to favorable action 8.00. The committee recommends favorable action as the Recreation Assessment Report funded by the spring 2013 town meeting included a significant listing of hazards in the town's playgrounds along with recommendations for upgrades. This expenditure will serve to remedy the hazards and make playgrounds more inviting and shorten the time required to complete the upgrades. Recommendations for upgrades funded by the Community Preservation Resources will be presented at the spring 2015 town meeting.
On my right?
Sandy Slavin, Chair of the Open Space Committee. There was...
There was a handout in a blue piece of paper at both yesterday and today's town meeting that identifies the hazards that have been called to our attention by the BL companies who's doing our assessment. We've gone through two reviews of the assessment by the Open Space Committee and are about ready to present it to the Board of Selectmen. When it's presented to the Board of Selectmen, the total study will be placed in the Wareham website for everybody to see, but the $50,000 will be set aside to handle those deficiencies that have been found and identified. Think about having a playground in the middle of the bus loop at Minut Forest. Think about having open pipes in some of our playgrounds. The $50,000 would be used to take care of our dangerous areas, whether or not, we won't use all $50,000, we would like to take neighborhood people to come and help rectify the dangers that exist in our playgrounds. Please support this. The specific acts will be coming as we come closer to implementing them. We know where we have our problems, we will be addressing each playground one by one, but you have the full list in front of you as to what this BL company's found as our problems. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article 29? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote. The vote is that the town transfer from Community Preservation Open Space Reserve the sum of $50,000. As it appears before you, it requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Aye.
All those opposed?
Article 36, to amend the town of Wareham bylaws.
This is a petition article?
Yes.
Let me just get my...
Should we have the petitioner read it?
Yes, we do.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator, Christopher Gabriel, Precinct 4. I'd like to give my minutes over to Attorney Mark Vaughn.
Would you make the motion on this, and then I would ask for courtesy of the floor to your attorney?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to give my minutes to Attorney Mark Vaughn.
You need to make the motion. Do you want to read it?
I have to read the article? Mark, can you?
You... Is the article that you want to read exactly as it appears on the screen, because to save you a little reading, I'm going to have Mr. Bowen approach you, but you could make a motion that you want it as it appears before you on the screen, and it would save you from reading it its entirety if what's on there is exactly what you want?
I move what's printed on the screen.
Do I have a second? Okay. Now, you would like to ask for courtesy of the floor for your attorney...
Yes.
...to speak on your behalf, Attorney Solomon?
Mark Vaughn.
Mark. I'm sorry, Mark Vaughn. Is there any objection? Hearing none. We will have Attorney Vaughn speak to Mr. Gabriel's article.
Good evening, Madam Moderator and town meeting members. For the record, Attorney Mark Vaughn, thank you for allowing me to speak behalf of Mr. Gabriel. We have submitted a warrant article that would allow for filling station use in certain specific and limited manner that is set forth in the motion that is on the screen. Specifically, it would be allowed in the general commercial zoning district only when certain requirements are met. The lot must be at least one acre in size. The lot or any portion thereof must be located within 2,000 feet of a federally designated interstate or interstate highway or interchange. And thirdly, said lot must be located on or have direct access to Cranberry Highway. There are other aspects of the article as well that are set forth on the screen. Just, as members of the body are likely aware, there is currently a prohibition on gasoline station use throughout the town. Since that bylaw prohibiting that use was passed in 2002, several gas stations have actually closed in town, thereby reducing the number of stations that existed when that bylaw prohibition was passed. Therefore, to the extent that the purpose of that bylaw was due to the belief by some that there may be too many gas stations in town with the possibility of even more coming, the reality is that several of those stations that were in existence have actually closed. Also, with regards to some of the remaining stations, because they are non-conforming uses, many of them are today underutilized. With that as background, we have worked very hard to craft a bylaw provision here that takes a very responsible and planned approach to allowing for a gas station use, understanding certainly that there may be locations in town where gas stations may not be desirable due to proximity to residential districts and other issues. We have deliberately designed the bylaw to allow for this only within a certain section of the general commercial district, that being within 2,000 feet of a interchange of 195 and Route 28. It should be noted also that this would not be allowed on the other side of 195, as you head up to Wareham Crossing and Walmart, as that is actually in a different zoning district, not the general commercial district. So, we're really talking about a very defined area where you can see this. Basically, it would be along Cranberry Highway, Route 28, from the police station property up to the interchange itself. Only a few properties would actually qualify under the provisions as they've been drafted. From a planning perspective, this section of Cranberry Highway, in our opinion, made sense because it's a high-volume road, approximately 18,000 vehicle trips per day. While it may sound like a statement of the obvious, the optimal location for a gas station is locating where cars are already on the road, rather than locating somewhere where they need to come to you. Also, by having a gas station use within close proximity to the highway interchange, it allows for residents the convenience of getting gas before accessing the highway. By requiring it to be one acre in size or more, it would prevent tight site layouts where you may have safety or other design constraints that would affect the layout. The one acre allows for the pumps to be laid out well, ample space for safe turning movements within the site and not impacting traffic on Cranberry Highway. Lastly, and very importantly, it needs to be noted that passage of this bylaw amendment does not enable this use automatically. The bylaw stipulates that the use can only be approved by special permit by the Board of Appeals. This would ensure that appropriate site planning issues and other impacts are appropriately addressed before anything could be built. Obviously, understanding that you don't look at zoning bylaw changes in a vacuum, if this bylaw were to pass, there would be a proposal submitted...
One minute.
...for a station located at the property of Mr. Gabriel on Cranberry Highway. We believe that this is an appropriate location for such a use. It would allow for safe right turn in and out movements for residents that are accessing the highway. And again, it would require special permit review, so we would need to be reviewed as part of that. Such a use would also generate considerable tax revenue for the town, Madam Moderator, residents. It's worth noting that in addition to the real estate tax revenue and building permit fee revenue, which would be significant, there would also be annual local meals tax revenue to the town...
Thirty seconds.
...as well via coffee sales and other related food item sales. There would also be significant employment opportunities as well for Wareham residents. We're estimating approximately eight full-time jobs and 16 part-time jobs. Obviously, in today's economy, understanding the importance of part-time jobs for those that are looking to supplement income. I appreciate the body's time and certainly would appreciate your favorable action on this article. Thank you.
Time. May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Vote of the Board of Selectmen was favorable action 3-0-0.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action 5-4-2 against and no abstains. The article has no immediate impact on the town tax rate or budget, but it could stimulate further tax revenue. This article provides with the opportunity for site filling stations adjacent to two major highways in town. It should be noted that any project would still be required to go through the Zoning Board of Appeals, special permit hearing process before a filling station could be built, approved, or built.
This is a zoning article, did require a public hearing. The Chairman of the Planning Board, was there a public hearing held, and may we have a report, please?
Yes, Madam Moderator.
Madam Moderator.
Judge Barrett, Chairman of the Planning Board. We did hold a public hearing on this on October 20th, at which time you heard pretty much the same presentation from the proponent's attorney, a little more detail into the site and their intent. There was no other public input at that time. Later in the evening, we, Planning Board, voted 3-1-0 not to support the article, based on recognition of previous votes where this body voted not, they didn't want any more gas stations. To the proponent's credit, he had submitted a good plan to the Planning Board with what appears to be a quality developer, but we felt that previous votes of this body were pretty loud in stating that they did not want to see any more gas stations in town. The other point that we made was that the bylaw change was so narrow in its scope that one could make the argument that it was spot zoning, and we did not get an actual ruling on that, but that was one concern.
Thank you. Gentlemen on my right?
Yes, Herb Williams, Precinct 1. Yes, I'm a customer of Mr. Chris. Yes, I go there frequently, but sometimes I think that the town of Wareham is anti-business, and I support his article. The reason I say that is the dog bone sidewalks downtown where we lost parking places, the terrible job in the winter of covering for the, removing the snow in the winter for the businesses down there. The last three towns I lived in, Woburn, Needham, and Medfield, all took care of their people downtown, Wareham does not. This is just an increase in business. Chris has assured me that he's not going out of business, he's just going to move. We'll have additional tax rate, and I support him completely on this, even though he didn't cut my hair right.
Thank you. Mr. Trupiano.
That's funny. All right. I actually was on the board when we promoted the article that didn't allow for any more fuel or storage out on the highway, out on Cranberry Highway as it stood. And we did that for a bunch of reasons, and as it turns out, we had sort of something that snuck in first before we got it onto the town meeting floor, and that was a gas station that they wanted on the corner of Depot Street at the Cumberland Farms. People might remember that. And thank goodness it's not there, because I know all of you folks have seen what the traffic's like and what everything else would be like if you could have a gas station right there. But just for the point, there's 17 gas stations along Cranberry Highway, 17, right this minute. Counted them all, 17. That's a lot of fuel stations on one strip. Now, I'm not anti-business, never have been in my whole life. I love to have business, but this is just something more we don't need. And the problem with this special permit process is, what happens is they go before the board, they promote their issue, and then the board says, "Well, we're turning it down because of traffic." Then they turn around, they file in court, and they say to you, "Well, we got a study that says it isn't a traffic issue." And the court says, "Well, yeah, it's not traffic, so we're going to have to give it to them." And we end up giving them these licenses. Now, the good news is, if you do end up voting this, the Board of Selectmen actually control it in the end anyway, because we have to give them a fuel storage permit. And without a fuel storage permit...
Thirty seconds.
...you can't have a gas station, obviously. And that happens to be a license that comes through us. So, we do have some other checks if you do decide to vote this. I'd urge you to vote against it. We have enough gas stations, and there's a lot of nice commercial area out there. And by the way, I'd like one thing before I go. I'd like Town Council to rule on that spot zoning issue, because he did take a zone and take a small piece out of the zone and call it, try to make this article fit it. Could you rule on that for us, please, Town Council?
To answer Mr. Trupiano's question?
Madam Moderator, through you to Mr. Trupiano in the meeting. This constitutes a change of the zoning table, so theoretically it could apply to more than one parcel. And as long as theoretically it can apply to more than one parcel, it would not constitute spot zoning.
Thank you. On my right?
Yes, Mary Scasiotti, Precinct 1. I serve on the zoning board, and I'm not speaking for the zoning board, but I will state that Mr. Gabriel and his attorney came before us, and we did not support this application for the similar reason that the Planning Board did, based on the existence of the prohibition that was put in place by town meeting. The other comments unrelated to that was brought up at that meeting within a three-mile range from the corner of Route 58 to the intersection where Main and Cranberry Highway meet. With the Irving Gas Station, there are six, six functioning gas stations right now. From the intersection of Route 195 and Cranberry Highway where this is suggested, one gas station, New England Farms, is 500 feet from the intersection, and the Irving Gas Station is roughly 1,056 feet from, well, roughly, from the intersection. So, the idea that this station need to be located on Cranberry Highway within 2,000 feet, we have that pretty much covered. So, I would suggest that maybe give some consideration to the fact that there's already six gas stations in that, six gas stations in three miles. Just think about how many more gas stations do we really need right now.
Thank you. Gentlemen on my left?
Christopher Gabriel, Precinct 4.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Gabriel, you gave your time to your counsel, so all of your time has been used. Gentlemen on my left?
Yes, Carboni, First Precinct. I appreciate Mr. Gabriel's efforts in getting this before us. However, I stand to oppose it, echoing the earlier speaker's comments. Besides not having ample access to existing fueling stations, there's also concerns about why the zoning and planning boards both turned us down, you know, for pollution, congestion, public safety. It is a busy area, and there's a lot of safety concerns to be addressed. So, again, just thank you for your consideration and voting this down.
Gentlemen on my right?
Michael Johnson, Precinct 4. I am in favor of this amendment for a number of reasons. I think it would boost the economy, as one of the other speakers stated, it would increase jobs, increase the tax revenue. Also, a main concern for me is safety with the, you know, the new business development, the Wareham Crossing, the Walmart, that area is really congested. I think a station on that side would alleviate some of the traffic concerns. I know in the morning when I'm going in to get my gas and coffee, you know, at the mobile going in the other way, it's tough trying to dodge in and out there. I've almost been hit a couple times, so I think that this would be a good fit. You'd get your gas, whatever you need, and jump right back on the highway. So, again, I would support this amendment. Article, sorry.
On the left?
Thank you, Mrs. Moderator. Ron Ines, Precinct 3. I would urge you to think about your water quality with the number of gas stations that we already have in this town. With 17 already, there are several locations where gas stations have been abandoned. If we need another gas station, go to those locations where we already have tanks in the ground. Another business would be great there, and I would support something like that. Thank you.
Selectmen title bond?
Yes. I hear the arguments about a lot of gas stations. I will say this, the more gas stations there are, the more they compete with each other, the cheaper gas is. Paying for gas sucks. I support this.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, please, please. Is there anything further to be said on Article 36? Seeing no one standing, I will... Do you wish to speak?
Yes. Alan Fogel, Precinct 4. When the Walmart in the Rosenberg is complete, there will be so heavy traffic, it will almost be impossible to get out of that mobile station onto the highway, crossing the highway into... into Route twenty-eight.
Thank you. Is there anything further to be said? Seeing no one standing, I will call for a vote on Article thirty-six as presented and appears before you on the screen. This is a zoning article. It does require a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The chair is in doubt. I'm going to take account. Ladies and gentlemen, please hold up your cards, and then please remain, we only have, I think, three articles after this. Tell us, please take account.
This is four.
This is all in favor of Article thirty-six. All those in favor of Article thirty-six. Eleven. In the center?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, three-nine. And on my left?
Twenty-two, two, two.
Twenty-two. All those opposed, please raise your cards. Fourteen. On my right?
Ten.
Ten. In the center?
Thirty-two, three, two.
And on my left?
Sixteen, one, six.
The votes in the affirmative are eighty-five and the negative are seventy-two. It fails to reach a two-thirds vote. The article fails.
Article twenty-six, I move that the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Historical Preservation Reserve to sum of a hundred and fourteen thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars for a grant to the American Legion Post Two Twenty for the restoration of the American Legion Post Two Twenty exterior located at seven, seven, seven Main Street in Wareham, Massachusetts.
Do I have a second? To speak to the article?
The American Legion Hall was built in nineteen twelve and was once used as a two-room schoolhouse. If possible, other sources of funding will be sought from various state and federal grants. There are eighty members who deserve a safe and clean environment to meet.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
The board voted favorable action, four, one, zero.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted favorable action, five in favor, three against, and no one abstained. The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article. Through our review, we noted that the building is a historical building that was once a town schoolhouse. The town transferred the building to the American Legion to use it as a post-meeting hall with the stipulation that it be returned to the town rather than be sold to a private party. While the American Legion is a private organization that is not open to the general public, the organization is made up of individuals who have served their country and who continue to contribute to the town through the Legion's many civic activities. Any similar organization that uses a historical site as its headquarters would be just as eligible to apply for CPA grant.
Thank you. To speak, on my right?
Johannes Wagner, seventy-two Paper Mill Road. The American Legion Post Two Twenty has cared for this building for fifty-eight years. It has not cost the town a penny. We pay all the utilities, we do all the maintenance and upkeep. The only thing that we've ever gotten from the town is the twenty thousand dollars a few years ago to remove the bats in our belfry and also to replace the roof. However, we serve the town in replacing all of the flags in all of the cemeteries, taking care of burning and disposing of unusable flags and so forth, and serving the town for Memorial Day and Veterans Day parades and so forth. The men can obviously not afford to restore the building. The building is an eyesore. It's the corner of now the Wareham Crossing, Super Walmart, and across from Deacon's School. And I would urge the body to pass this. We're very loyal to the town, and I would appreciate approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen on my right?
Joe Capello from precinct one. We are not only eighty members looking for a warm place to meet, we are eighty veterans. And I'm sure by the many gray hairs that I see here, we remember what veterans are. They gave us the privilege of having this town meeting. And I would like to say, we do heat the building, and we do pay for the lights, we give scholarships to the students, and other awards. Also, I would like to make this note, that the American Legion does not own that hall. The town of Wareham, they're the owners of that building. Thank you.
Is there anything further to be said on Article twenty-six? Mr. Camerano?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I was one of the Finance Committees that voted against this. Now, I'm not against veterans or anything like that, I just want that understood. But the only problem I have with this is, it is a small group, and we did repair the roof and everything. I've been driving by this building for a long time. Now, besides the roof, they haven't done anything outside. I mean, the place looks really bad. And, I mean, doing the roof five years ago should have motivated them, you know, to do some kind of upkeep. I mean, being, you know, only eighty members, the public doesn't use the building, and I know that they, you know, they helped the town and they helped, you know, everything. I just feel that such a small group, they need to do more on their own to use the whole town's money. Thank you.
On my, on my right?
First, a question. We are told in the Warren article that the American Legion owns the building. It was transferred to the American Legion. I read that to mean they own the building. As a point of clarification, who owns the building?
To answer the question?
Madam Moderator?
No, I would like someone from the town. Can anyone answer that question? No?
Madam Moderator, I can.
To answer the question?
I can.
To answer the question?
Yes. Johannes Wagner. We have the right of use. It was given to us for one dollar from the town. And to answer the question about not taking care of the building-
Just to, the question was just to answer the question? Who owns the building?
Yes, we have, if I may, we have the right of use for one dollar since nineteen fifty-six, and that allows us to use the building, which you are required to give us a place to meet. And that's it. When we leave, you get the building, so maybe you should take care of it.
Ladies and gentlemen, please. We've done very, very well. Let's not go off track. Mr. Struck, continue.
Thank you. My understanding, and I'm perfectly happy to have Attorney Bone correct me, but if it's simply a right of use, that is a form of a lease, and that we still retain ownership of the property, that makes me much more comfortable with the idea that we should make sure that it's a suitable property for use. And if we chose to charge them a dollar, or ten dollars, or whatever we chose to charge them, that's an independent issue. I am perfectly comfortable spending town money to maintain a building and to put back into appropriate condition something that we own, especially something that has historical significance, and I would urge support for the article.
Gentlemen on my left?
Madam Moderator, through you to the previous speakers. In nineteen fifty-eight, the town recorded on the deed a right-to-reenter clause. The town has reversionary rights to the property, which will revert to the town when, if the Legion no longer exists.
Anything further, Mr. Poweritis?
Yes. Since nineteen fifty-six, when the town gave the property to the Legion, sweat equity and labor from the members have maintained and repaired the building. Right now, the building is in serious condition. The restoration and renovation work will remove and replace the exterior rotted gutters, windows, doors, framing, trim, and wood siding shingles. This will protect the building from further deterioration, preserve and extend the life of the building. The work will be done in a manner to replicate the old nineteen twelve schoolhouse. There is a historical perpetual preservation restriction on the property.
Thank you. Mrs. Park?
Well, I can tell the body one thing, my dad's rolling over in his grave tonight. You know, to hear my colleagues or anyone criticize the Legion, it just kind of sticks a knife in my heart, because these guys, the membership, the general membership, the young ones that were in the Legion up until recently were in their eighties. They could hardly even move, but they dragged themselves there because they believed in the brotherhood. They gave up whatever amount of years they did to serve us, to protect our freedom. We have an obligation to them to maintain this building and help them, and I hope that you all vote in approval for this.
Mrs. Whiteside?
Thank you. First of all, for all of the members, thank you for your service to the country. I appreciate it. We all do. Second of all, if we have a revision clause, then we're gonna end up owning the building when there is no more Legion. So, we are investing in ourselves. Third, I challenge my board members to another cleanup. We've done a couple of playgrounds. We are now going to make your grounds pretty. I can't work on the inside for you, but I can get a whole bunch of people in this town who will help you plant flowers, trees, memorial trees, whatever you want. I'd like everyone in this room to join me in that effort, and I urge that you vote positively on this.
On my right?
Thank you. Sandy Slaven. I read from the assessor's document, the record of owner, owner record, Wareham Post Number Two Twenty, American Legion, is the owner of record in the town records. And as a side note, I'm one of those students who graduated from Wareham High School who got a scholarship from the American Legion. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, on my left? We're approaching the art of ten. We still have two more articles to go, so-
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move the question.
Question has been moved. It requires a two-third vote. I'll try for unanimous. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. The Article twenty-six now comes before you. That the town vote to appropriate from the Community Preservation Historical Reserve to sum of a hundred and fourteen thousand, five forty-three. As it appears before you, it requires a majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Article three.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of seventy-eight thousand, five hundred dollars to fund the following union contracts. Clerical Union, Dispatchers, EMT Association, Four Persons, Municipal Maintenance and Custodians, Steel Workers, Lower Management, Steel Workers, Upper Management, and Superior Officers.
Do I have a second? To speak to the article?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. This article is to fund the union contracts. They are for fiscal years of fourteen, fiscal fifteen, and fiscal sixteen. This is the first time that we're actually going out into the future, and which will allow us to bargain, again, three years to start working FY sixteen, to bargain into the future, so we can actually budget properly and make sure that we are bargaining into the future and not into arrears as we've done in the past years. Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen revoted on this article after getting proper information on Monday, and the board voted four, zero, zero, favorable action.
And the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee met yesterday to revote its issue. We voted seven, four, zero, no's, and zero abstains. The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this. While labor contract increases should be properly budgeted for each year, this seventy-eight thousand, five hundred dollars represents the balance of monies not budgeted for previous years. Without any other available funding source, payment from free cash is physically responsible.
Thank you. Is there anything to be said on Article three, seeing no one standing? I will call for a vote on Article three. It requires a majority vote. The motion is before you, that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of seventy-eight thousand, five hundred to fund the following union contracts. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. Article twenty, our last article, and before we get to that, I want to thank you all for coming this evening. I want to thank the Finance Committee, the Board of Selectmen, the Town Administrator, Town Council, who have worked very hard to put all of these together for you. I can attest to the amount of hours that goes into it, and I think they're doing a much better job. I think we're moving forward with Town Meeting. Our last article, may I have a motion, please?
Article twenty, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of one hundred and ninety thousand dollars to complete the measure and list of all real estate in town.
Do I have a second? To speak to the article?
Thank you. The Commonwealth of Massachusetts requires a full interior and exterior inspection of all parcels. This project will be active for three years in order to accommodate the inspection of roughly fourteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty parcels. Appendix B is in the back of the booklet and has been available to people. Thank you.
May I have the vote of the Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen revoked on Monday, favorable action, four, zero, zero.
May I have the vote and recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted again last night, and the vote was seven, four, zero, against, and zero abstain. The Finance Committee recommends favorable action on this article. It's a mandated procedure that must be conducted- It's a mandated procedure that must be conducted, and every property must be expected once every nine years, required for us in order to set our tax rate, and it should be financially planned for in the future. Having no other available funds source to get this procedure done this year, using available free cash is our only choice.
Anyone to speak to Article 20, seeing no one? I will call for a vote on Article 20. It requires a majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. I will now accept a motion to dissolve this town meeting.
Aye.
May I have a second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? This meeting is dissolved.